It is now seven o'clock, we're gonna start our regular meeting. I'd like to welcome everyone to the meeting, this is May first. Vicki, can I get a call to order? Or, well, we're calling for, sorry, never mind, I skipped a bunch of lines.
Okay.
Alright, let's do the pledge allegiance.
Good job, Mary.
Because now can we do roll call, I'm sorry. Scarlett?
Here.
Scott?
Here.
Cindy?
Here.
Cody?
I'm here.
Brian?
Here.
Gary?
Here.
Eric? Eric? Okay. Do we have minutes for April 24th?
Yes.
Yes.
Best day ever.
Good day.
Okay.
I'd like to know what N A and M C stands for under my day.
What Eric asked was what N C and M A stands for behind his.
M C is motion carry.
Oh, motion carry.
And then, and I didn't even think about writing it out. Um, I should have probably, I'll change it. Um, and then N A, we couldn't hear his responses on a lot of it, so...
When we couldn't hear your response, she put N A.
Non-applicable.
So we'll make sure that she hears all of your responses tonight.
Alright.
Okay?
Thank you, thank you.
Okay. Oh. I'm not looking in the right place, hold on. I'm sorry, I thought all... It's going on.
You got a mess.
Yes, I have a mess, I'm sorry. Um, this is all. There it is. Yes, I'm sorry. I thought you had me too. I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes of April 24th, 2024. Some more. Motion by Scarlett. Second from Brian.
Little Carrie here.
Oh, I'm sorry, Gary. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Ah, sorry, Eric, sorry. That was the one, sorry. Um, do we have any changes to the agenda? I'm looking, I'm looking.
Oh, okay.
I have. With no changes to the agenda, we're going to go to number seven, which is organizational appointments and resolutions.
Are we gonna approve the agenda?
Oh, yes, I guess we should probably approve the agenda. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda? Some more.
Second.
Smoothed by Scarlett and seconded by Brian, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, now we're gonna go to organi-- can everyone hear me?
No, you guys need to speak up. And you're in the back.
Sorry, can you hear me now?
A little better, yeah.
Okay. Um, we're going to organizational appointment and resolutions. Um, the first resolution we have is a resolution appointing the town attorney for the town of Sugar City. Um, I will read it, it's resolution number 2024 dash C K dash six. The town of Sugar City is a Colorado statute town organized under CRS 31 dash 4 dash 301 except and, whereas CRS 31 dash 4 dash 304 requires that a statutory towns board of trustees appoint a town attorney, and whereas the board of trustees has reviewed and considered the qualifications of the prospective candidate, and whereas there aren't any existing minutes of the board of trustees of previous offices being appointed, and where the previous town attorney abruptly resigned, and whereas the board of trustees desires to appoint a town attorney in accordance with CRS section 31 dash 4 dash 304. Now therefore be it resolved by the board of trustees of the town of Sugar City, Colorado as follows. Number one, Stephen Johnston is appointed as the town attorney and that all previous notes, communications, writings, and all other information in the previous town attorney's possession known as the client file be immediately delivered by the previous town attorney to the mayor and Stephen Johnston. And number two, the board of trustees affirms that it will purchase insurance to cover faithful performance of duties, which covers all employees, including the officer hearing up to the required statutory amount per occurrence. Can I have a motion to approve?
I make a motion.
I'll second it.
It's moved by Eric and seconded by Cody. Can we do a roll call, Vicki, please? Scarlett?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Uh, Brian?
Yes.
Cody? Eric?
Yes.
Gary?
Nay.
Okay.
How was the last one, the second?
Eric, was the motion.
Motion was by Eric and seconded was by Cody.
Thank you.
Um, the next resolution for the appointment of Donnie Brewer for temporary help in the office. A resolution appointing temporary help for the town clerk for the town of Sugar City. Whereas the town of Sugar City is a Colorado statutory town organized under CRS 31 dash 4 dash 301 except, and whereas CRS 31 dash 4 dash 304 requires that a statutory towns board of trustees appoint a town clerk, and whereas the board of trustees has reviewed and considered the qualifications of the prospective candidates, and whereas the previous town clerk left the office in such a shambles and mess that the current town clerk needs assistance to correct the previous deficiencies, and whereas the board of trustees desires to appoint temporary office assistants to help the town clerk. Now therefore be it resolved by the board of trustees of the town of Sugar City, Colorado as follows. Number one, Donnie Brewer is hereby appointed as temporary office assistant for a period of not more than ninety days to assist with the transition period. Number two, this is a temporary appointment to be limited to no more than thirty-one hours per week and without any benefits. And number three, the temporary position shall be paid at minimum... Um, that should, this has to be changed.
I would move to table it then, if it needs to be changed.
I think, I think we need to table this because this is wrong. So we're gonna table this? I'm sorry, I didn't realize there was a typo. So this will be on for our next meeting.
You might consider the wording on that too.
Thank you.
Town resolution is not the place to take pot shots at someone. That was a personal issue.
I agree.
We're not into that.
I'm sorry, Gary, I just didn't hear you.
I said that you might reconsider the wording on that, that a town resolution is not the place to take pot shots at someone personally.
It could be considered libelous in nature.
I'd already written needlessly harsh language on my paper.
Okay, number eight is public comment. Karina, you're first, would you like to have, do you think public comment?
Yes. Hello, my name is Karina and I just wanna let everybody know. Hello, my name is Karina and I just wanna let everybody know that I'm running a Facebook page called Sugar City Everything, and there's a second group, I guess, it's called Sugar City Everything Group. Um, everybody is welcome to join, you guys can comment, share, post anything that you want that has to do with Sugar City on there. Um, I just wanna make sure that I keep sharing that with you guys, so if you can't make it to the meetings, I have it on live for you guys on Facebook.
Jay?
I'll be brief tonight, it sounds like you've got other things going on. I just simply wanted to comment, I turned in these court requests for your text messages and for the logs, not for my sake, but so you can provide them for everyone else. The fact that you, uh, just simply said no, means you're not being transparent. Doesn't feel very honest and open, it feels very unusual.
Can you please read your court request, Mr. Johnson?
And to be clear, I knew I could have typed that language very tightly to get to a very specific few hours and specific business open. I wanted to see if you were gonna be fair and just clear. I don't even need to see the text messages, ma'am, but I know my name's in them. I am writing a response to your recent request for records pertaining to the cellphone usage of all trustees, Mayor and Attorney Nathan Schultz, trustees and the mayor of... This is kinda confusing, actually. And the mayor of town of Sugar City and their private attorney. We appreciate your interest in accessing information related to our operations. We are committed to transparency and accountability in accordance with applicable laws and regulations. As a government entity, we are bound by laws and regulations governing the privacy and confidentiality of individual records, including cellphone usage. Access to such records is subject to legal constraints and must be handled in compliance with relevant statutes and guidelines. Upon reviewing your request, we have determined that the release of cellphone records belonging to all of the towns of Sugar City trustees and mayor may implicate privacy record, my, excuse me, privacy rights and be subject to exemptions. Additionally, to disclose or such records could potentially compromise sensitive information or undermine ongoing information. While we strive to fulfill requests for information in timely and transparent manner, we must also prioritize the protection of individual privacy rights and the confidentiality of government records. Therefore, we regret to inform you that we are unable to fulfill your request for access to all trustees and the mayor's cellphone records at this time. I simply was giving you an open door, ma'am. I did not, I posted a video on Friday that said I didn't expect to get this. I was hoping you would, you would be willing to sit with me, show me some records from that day and say, you know, it was a big mistake, it was a misunderstanding, let's work this out, that's not the way you wanted to play with this one. I'm done, today's my last day, I will not come after another one. I hope you recorded those records for the state to review, all of you. Never for me, ma'am, I'm for the people. Thank you.
Jim?
Um, yeah, actually. Since the election and since Ms. Carley, Mr. Borland have been elected, you two have made it very public and very known that you will not communicate with us. And that's fine, you don't have to, you don't have to say another word. But I am gonna ask that you also don't get to vote on things that pertain to me, my husband, or my property. And all these problems that we've been trying to address with you two, I would like to address with your attorney from now on, from the very beginning.
Absolutely.
Thank you. I'll be in touch with you, can I please have your email?
Yes.
Thank you so much. I'm Kimberly Kohler, I'm sure we'll speak a whole lot, thank you.
We actually took the time to lift you up, sir, we're glad to have you along.
Great.
It seems we looked you up more than maybe the council did, which is not impressive.
You're on, you don't want public comment, do you? You don't need.
I don't need.
Deborah Larson, you don't need. Roger Baker, you're up.
I'll add a couple of comments, a couple of issues. One, this trash business has been in Sugar City for eighteen years, not eighteen months, eighteen years. I've not seen one thing that that trash business has done for this town, which was the intent. I think it's an albatross, and I think it's taken this town under. We can discuss that at a later date, 'cause I'd only have three minutes. Secondly, we have a councilman, or several on this council today, that have undermined, from the last council, have undermined this council, and I seriously think that we need to consider doing a recall. They sat here for thirty minutes at the last minute and lied to this group of people, face to face, led us on for thirty minutes over this ballot box and the keys, and then said, "Well, we don't know where they're at." And I'm pissed, that's, that's not the kinda people we want on our council, we want people that are here to serve the citizens of this town, not themselves and not this council. The backstabbing is overwhelming. And I think that we, we collectively as citizens of this town, need to get together and get through this stuff and get rid of some of these people and get on with business. I don't care what happened yesterday, I care about what we do tomorrow.
Thank you, Roger. Well said. Chuck, you're on our list, but you're also on the agenda, would you like to just stay on the agenda or would you like public comment?
I just need to be on the agenda.
Okay. Um, Sharon? Sharon, here.
Hi, I'm Sharon Soule.
Just so we can hear ya.
Why, I can't hear you guys, so.
Well, let me use it, I promise.
Okay, so, what? I can't hear you. What? Okay, what I wanna know, I've only got three minutes, but what I'm doing is asking questions I'd like you guys to answer if possible today. If not, then it needs to be answered however you guys answer my questions.
Yes, please.
Okay, what are we doing for a code enforcer?
Not the budget.
We haven't got that far yet, we're still trying to figure out the day-to-day so that we can, we can work on that, 'cause we understand we need a code enforcer.
Oh, big time, big time.
Yes, we understand.
Like last year, code enforcer didn't make everybody cut their weeds, they didn't do this, they didn't do that, it was nasty.
Yeah.
Okay, another one is, why aren't the holes filled? I mean, we've got asphalt and we got road base down there in the tree dump. Why isn't the maintenance people filling in the holes? I'm getting tired of ruining my car, it's about ready to fall apart. I mean, all the streets are bad, but Baltimore is really bad. And you're going up to the stop sign up there to get onto the back road back there?
Yes.
It's ridiculous. But then on my road, the back road is always coming down my road. Why can't he go other ways instead always coming down Wyoming? Why does he have to use my road all the time? My road is terrible. And then, really, huh?
I'm, I'm gonna ask, I will ask Terry.
Okay.
About the asphalt.
And when are they gonna get this water leak fixed over here on Adams?
Um, I talked to Terry today, they found another leak.
Why aren't they fixing it?
Well, we are looking for parts.
Oh, Jesus.
Yeah. And, you know, we don't have any parts on hand, so, but he did say that they found another leak today. And so, they're supposed to work on it tomorrow.
They got the parts?
I don't know, I assume so.
Well, they need to get them, okay. But the thing there is, why, I know you don't have, we don't have any money, but when we get money, buy these parts and keep it on hand. We have water leaks every other day, it seems like, down here. Something needs to be done with all this water system.
Yeah.
Okay. Alright, that's it for now.
Okay, thank you. John, Johnny, huh? You don't have anything?
You know, what you need to do is change that back there because it says, "Please sign in." People don't realize that when you sign in, that means you wanna give out a talk. So you need to put on there only if you wanna ask what.
Okay, we'll make a little sign in, yeah.
Yes.
Because that's what, what happens to me, is like, "Sirs, please sign in," and then when they call on you, you're like, "What?"
Okay.
You need to change that.
Put a little block there for the social media, if you wanna speak.
Um, Eve?
Can you use the microphone, ma'am, please? Thank you. For you that don't know me, my name is Eve. I live behind the water tower, straight behind the water tower. And last year, in the very last of the meetings, in the very last December one, I, Demita was still sitting here, and she told the council that she had been that the water tower is gonna be cleaned. She now tells me, "Don't know if it's gonna be cleaned, when, this year, or what." But that's what she said, she said that the water tower needed to be cleaned. Okay, first off, as far as I understand, it's leaning towards me, so it can't be filled otherwise.
Okay. Is this correct?
And, thank you. And, uh, the next thing is, when they cleaned it, the last time they cleaned it, back in 2012 or 2013, somewhere back in there, they, they put all a bunch of chemicals in, in water. They had a hose, which really very nicely had coming out, and it was coming out on the east side of the tower, went across the inner ditch, across the alley, went down to the ditch on the south side of my property. That's funny. Got later in the day, and they turned the company, turned the big one on, the big wheel, turned it on, flooded me. I don't wanna be flooded. It came within three feet of my house, nobody was answering the phone here in the office, nobody was anywhere around. I couldn't get the attention of the people because, hey.
I don't yell very loud, you know?
They were way at the back and I was way up at the front, 'cause I couldn't get past the water. And since I had that and all those chemicals from not only the stuff in the water, but when they cleaned the inside of the tower, it wasn't too bad, but when they spray painted the outside, I got paint all over my land. I can't find food because of this. So, I would like to know when you're gonna do it, what company you're gonna use, and don't let them flood me.
Okay, so, when we do that, we can put out a notice that we're going to be cleaning the tower that day, so that you'll know, and I can have Vicki call you, so that you'll know.
Okay, that sounds good. Do, are you doing that this year?
I, I don't know, I don't know what, what you mean now. I'm not sure. Actually, our water guy is here tonight, so he is gonna talk. So when Chuck comes up to talk, um, maybe that's a question we can ask him, he might know a little bit more about it tonight.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay.
But I, I will have Vicki call you when we clean it, so that you will be aware of what we're doing.
Okay.
Okay, and we will also post it.
Good, thank you.
Bonnie and Jason came in, do you guys wanna be on public comment? Okay, Mark?
No.
Good evening. I know it's been a constant issue for at least the last six years, but it's that time of year, people, specific people in our neighborhood are letting dogs out all the time, day and night, and they're bothering other people coming out of their property, and they've had at least five bites, I believe. Not recently, but you can keep, change the dogs at some point, it's the owner's responsibility. And so, they're out again, and I don't believe they've been registered. There are, there's a beautiful German shepherd, two pit bulls, and another pit bull puppy. At least, that's sort of the ones I'm aware of. So, and when you try to shoot them in the town, then the police officers say, "Hey, we shouldn't be doing this." And so, they try to attack the person who was trying to defend themselves. So, whatever the town can do would be greatly appreciated. Um, and maybe you can get a judge that actually enforces things.
Okay, and did you know one of your puppies is limping?
Yes, I, that, uh, it pulled a nail.
Okay, I just wanted to know, 'cause I saw that when I was coming up here, your dog is limping.
Yes, it, it, it lost, it pulled the nail out.
Okay.
And so, um, toenail.
Okay.
Alright, and it's received assistance.
Okay, thank you.
But it is in my yard.
Yes, it is in your yard.
Thank you.
Yes. Yes.
Following up with, I think it's fair to give everybody in town a warning. I have livestock, I've lost over sixty chickens, I've lost goats, and we've lost calves to town dogs, not coyotes. And I try to give everybody at least one warning. I'm telling everybody in town right now, if your dog comes out to my place, it won't be coming home. I'm tired of losing pets and animals because you can't take responsibility for your pet. I don't mean that to be cruel, it's just a reality of trying to survive.
Kind of giving a brief reading.
Just give it the backswing.
Yeah.
Hey, Sandy, I have a question real quick, I can't walk all the way up here, it's not.
Okay.
Um, do you guys have plans in place to start spraying for mosquitoes this year? There are really quite a few.
No, Bettina would.
There are, it's like, my wife last year was used to it.
I will get with Terry and find out what her plan is.
Okay.
Eric, has he said anything to you about spraying for mosquitoes?
Well, we haven't.
Eric, you know anything about that?
So, we have a sprayer, we just don't have the chemicals to spray. Um, it, it's...
I know it's very expensive.
Seven hundred and eighty, I'm, I'm going off of memory, and it's been a while, but I think it was like almost eight hundred dollars for a barrel, for the cheapest one they had.
Did you have alternate them?
Yes, maybe.
Or we're just ordering, I just, I'm totally into orders. But also take into account, um, when you order like chemicals and stuff, they do charge a freight charge, and the freight charge is often more than the chemicals. Way more expensive than the actual product.
Maybe we could, if you could check on some prices for us?
Absolutely.
And then check with Scarlett, and maybe when they order, we could pay you back off of their order?
That would be awesome if we could, 'cause I know we use the same kind of sprayer that last summer we got it fixed up in Detroit, so.
Is there any chance of finding a local supplier and just go pick it up ourselves on trailer?
Uh...
I know it has that transportation tradition, but.
Well, um, I've more than so many gallons.
All of the chemicals that I've had to find are out of state.
All of ours come from Bend East, which comes from Bedford.
The, the closest, the closest chemicals is Kansas, 'cause the one chemical company we have is in Denver and they shut down.
Okay. Thought I'd ask.
And I will check with Bend East, so I'll be coming by. Okay, anything else in the public comment? Oh, Mr. Schlesser?
You know.
Okay, I, I have your stuff in my, my report, so, okay. So, okay. We're gonna go to old business, to the trash truck discussion. Um, I actually have the copy of the, um, what we talked about of redoing that truck. It's thirty-one thousand, seven hundred and ninety-five dollars, it's a catalyst. We claim just do not have the money to do that, we have got to figure something else out.
Yes, um, Stephen was getting a quote from Ty.
Oh, from Ty?
Yeah, but he hasn't got it yet, on the other news, so, um, we're still looking for something cheaper, but.
So, I'm just gonna table that, I'm just gonna keep that on as old business.
Yeah, just keep it on the agenda, and when we can find something we can do, we'll bring it to the board.
Okay. And Vicki, um, well, no, I'm sorry, not Vicki, Donnie actually called Rush and got some more of our bill taken off, she got the sales tax. She got the sales tax taken off that, so it's not two hundred seventy-nine dollars. It's a little bit cheaper than that. Because they had charged us sales tax. So she took care of that. The next thing is Hankel and Company, and I put I. Bailey. I've actually talked to I. Bailey. I want to put Hankel and Company on Table It because the guy that actually does our stuff for I. Bailey is out of the country for two weeks. He's on vacation. And when he comes back, he wants to explain to us exactly what it is they have done and what they are doing because they, he claims that they are doing part of the audits. If he has done that, then we are way more ahead of the game than I thought we were. And I can always hope. So we will see. So if we could just table that also until the next time? And Chuck, you're up. And is Terry with you? Yes, he is. Okay.
Good evening. My name is Chuck Dawn. I've worked with Colorado Water for fourteen years. That means I work for you guys. I am a circuit rider for Colorado Water. I travel the state, helping small water systems with what technical assistance and training I can. I've been, the altitude valve has been brought to my attention several times. It limits how full the tank can be or what the fill level is for the tank. Some of our other staff has been brought in on it as well. There was a quote done last year for a new altitude valve to replace everything in there. I had a gentleman come down with Pipestone Company, and he looked at it. He has dealt with Clay Valve, the valve manufacturer there, for over thirty-five years. And when he looked at this valve, he says, "The best thing we can do is replace it." So that was my recommendation. Somehow, the town found somebody to replace the pilot control on the valve. That's been replaced. The valve still doesn't work. The main body of the valve needs to be replaced. I had John Tetter with Pipestone do another quote. The complete valve is twelve thousand one, twelve thousand and ten dollars. That doesn't include shipping. It doesn't include getting it put in. There's a, if he, if you want him to come down on startup, it's going to be another twelve hundred dollars. Vicki got the quote from him late this afternoon. I don't know if she passed it out to you guys or not, but she's got it.
I'll leave that to you, Cindy. I have it.
Because you had the pilot valve repl, or the pilot controls replaced on that, we could just replace the main valve body. I don't remember what he gave me for a price on that. Give me just a moment, and I can come up with that. The main body itself is thirty-nine hundred dollars. I can assist with moving the pilot over to the new valve. I can assist somewhat with changing the valve out. My position, my job, says I'm not supposed to get down in the valve, which is where all the work's done. I can be eyes and knowledge on it. I just can't get down in there and do all the work. There are some ball valves, seven or eight dollar pieces that need to be replaced when we, if we do this. But by putting that, by getting that control valve, that altitude valve to work again, it will greatly improve the efficiency of your wells and how they fill the tank and how you guys stay ahead of the game in getting water in the tank. Having water should in an emergency arise. Currently, the way the tanks are run is...
Mercury switch?
They're on mercury switch, a pressure switch, which is one pound PSI is two and a half feet of water. That makes a big difference on a mercury switch up there. The mercury switches aren't designed to handle that fine tuning. If you get this altitude valve working, you can control it down to a few inches instead of, you know, four or five feet. But though, I can answer questions if needed or if you have any. I was asked to come talk to you guys about this, and that's kind of where I'm at with it.
So I have a question. It seems like, I don't remember when, so please don't quote me on a timeframe, but a gentleman in the town had approached us and said that he could assist in that specific matter for pennies on the dollar compared to the quote that we had been given. And we had been told as a council that that work had been done. And so I guess my question is, is was that a fruitless effort? Was that, what, why did we spend our money on that instead of going the full altitude valve? Like, can you explain to me, just 'cause I don't understand water very much, was that a fruitless expenditure of money for the town?
It wasn't completely fruitless. The pilot is what controls the main body of the valve. You have a little control over here that decides whether this big valve is open or closed. This valve has three eighth lines on it. The main body is four inches. So it's, the little control is what you replaced. That is a big part of this valve. It's, you know, the main body's three thousand dollars. The whole thing is twelve thousand. So it's a big part of it. He, we would have to take that off of the old valve and put it on the new valve. So you're redoing the labor there some. If the whole body had been changed in the process, it would have been much easier, much more ahead of the game. This, the main body of the valve is in such state of disrepair, and it's been not used for many, many years. And there's really no way to test what's good and bad on it. So you could take it apart and replace the parts inside, but Mr. Tetter gave me prices on repair parts, and there would be more than the whole valve.
So in the long, if I'm understanding correctly, in the long run, it would be cheaper to replace the entire valve than to part it out, essentially?
At this point, it would be cheaper to replace the main body of the valve and use the controls that were just installed.
Okay.
You'd have to remove them from the old body and put them on the new body, but it's, that can be done relatively easily.
Okay. So what are we looking out for a timeline? Is this something that is immediately done now? Or is it something that we can kind of hold up on for a while?
It hasn't worked for many years.
Oh, well, then, okay.
The quicker you get it fixed, the more efficiently your wells are going to operate. That's what it boils down to.
And how long does it, and how should a valve usually last? If it's maintained properly?
If it's maintained properly, the maintenance can be two or three hundred dollars over four or five years. But the valve lasts forever if it's maintained. When this valve was first brought to my attention, this valve is probably two and a half feet tall from the very top to the very bottom. And I could see that much of it. It was under mud. Rest of it was completely filled with mud. That's how long it hasn't been working and hasn't...
Been maintained.
Been maintained, correct.
So thirty-nine hundred and change per valve approximately delivery and installation fee?
The delivery is going to be freight on, he told me about a hundred and seventy-five pounds. He didn't know exactly what freight was gonna be on that. The timeframe is four to six weeks. He's sure they have it in Dallas. They may have it in Denver.
Well, those two prices are just gonna be vastly different.
Installation is going to be, we had somebody lined up to do it at one point. I think you talked to somebody...
We had it set up, and then the previous board just had to drop a lot, change their mind.
Who was it? Do you remember who it was?
I do not. It was a company you recommended.
I'm trying to come back to the name on it.
'Cause John gave us one too, and we couldn't, they didn't get back with us, and one you got, got back with us.
John Leary is the one that John Tetter gave you. And I gave you Utility Technical Services. I don't have it with me, but I can get the number for them. As for startup, you know, to put it back into commission, John Tetter will come down and do it for you. His labor rate is twelve hundred dollars for the day. It's four hundred miles round trip for him. Colorado Water has this dude that's a circuit rider. It helps John teach classes on those valves. He'd probably do it for you if you talked to him.
Where is he out of?
Out of Pueblo. John's out of Denver. I'm out of Pueblo.
Do you remember this gentleman's name?
Say, Chuck, you wanna do a class? You wanna do a class and help us out?
Hand it up.
Please.
We're getting ready to do one in Durango.
Perfect. Let's do one here. 'Cause then I can send my work with you guys over here to be in that class too.
We'll, we'll look at it. We'll get one set up in the area.
How much does a class run, cost?
I think Roll Water's now charging forty-five dollars a person. I think, for a membership. I don't do... Four years ago, I was part of the training group, and now I'm a circuit rider. I can't put down any time. The word "training" can't be in anything, in any of my logs, but I do technical assistance and training for the people that treat drinking water.
Are you a, Terry, are you a member of Colorado Rural Water, aren't you?
Sugar City is. So is Ordway.
I was like, I know we are. I just wasn't sure about Sugar City.
Yeah, Sugar City is also.
Could you leave a couple of your cards?
I can. In fact, I actually remembered to do that before I came in tonight.
So I think what we need to do is we need to get a hard number so that we know exactly what we're doing.
Well, it sounds like you're not gonna get a hard number because of the freight for a hundred and seventy-five pounds. And then if it's gonna come from Dallas or Denver, that's gonna affect your freight costs.
Well, if you talk to John, and Vicki has his contact information now, if you guys are really looking at it, he'll put some more effort into it and tell you what it's gonna be. He put together everything and had it ready to go. He came down and looked at everything with me. If you had bought that valve, or if the town had bought that valve, then you wouldn't have had to pay for his trip down here that time. But since I didn't pay for the valve...
And that's the three thousand dollars, correct?
What, going forward, that would be three thou, thirty-nine hundred, almost four thousand.
So if we were to, by happenstance, have a class here and use this, this valve for the class, training-wise?
We actually have a demonstrator.
Would that assist with cost a little bit?
Probably not.
Okay.
Yeah, we have a demonstrator where you can actually put your hands on it and...
Something I would like to mention while we're at it. The reason...
The calories.
Sorry. Something I'd like to mention while we're at it. The reason the tower didn't get cleaned when the people came out the last time was 'cause the level was too low because it had to work off of the mercury switches, not the altitude valve, which put us even further behind. So the sooner this is done, the sooner the rest of all of that can continue, so...
So when was the last time the tower was cleaned?
Actual cleaning, uh...
I think when Nick was here.
When Nick was here, so three and a half, four years.
At least four years ago.
Yeah, something like that.
How often should that tower be cleaned?
It's supposed to be inspected every five years.
So we're right at that point?
Yes. And it was inspected last year, and that was one of the things they told us we needed to do. That's why they was coming to do it. It is due for it. But it needs to be full for them to send their divers in, and wrong switches running it, it wasn't full enough. And so it still needs cleaned. But that altitude valve will assist in that process, so...
I don't know, what do you guys think?
Do you have to drain that tower to take the valve body out?
Should not be able to, should not need to. From what I understand, there's a bypass around it. We can put the tank, the town, on the tank and pumps and just isolate this valve and take it out and put it back.
Terry, does that bypass work?
I don't know, I had no idea.
Could we have like a meeting of the minds at some point in the near future to try and figure this out so we can get a hard number so that, like, the Sugar City folks know exactly what that hard number would be to be able to make that kind of a determination?
And a line of action?
Correct.
So what I'm hearing is we're gonna table this until we can get...
It sounds like to me we need to have a meeting with Chuck and kind of figure out a game plan so that we have something more presentable to the town. 'Cause it sounds like right now we don't have enough information to be accountable to our town folks.
If y'all don't have any more questions for me, I'm gonna go sit down. Thank you very much.
Unless you wanna show everybody your penny trick?
Not tonight.
Your question?
Yeah, I got a question about the water.
Okay.
Correct me if I'm wrong, I have two questions, that's it. Are you the same crew that was with us five years ago? It worked on the water, all the water pumps and all the...
I'm not on the crew. I bring technical assistance and training to your crew.
'Cause from what I understand, the people that was in charge of that beforehand would get paid like about ten thousand dollars a year to make care of it. And then they didn't do it. And I understand that previous mayors was supposed to be on the fence with that company to try to get some reimbursement from them from ripping this off, ten thousand dollars a year, something like that nature.
It was closer to forty-five thousand dollars a year. There was a service contract on the tower for them people.
Terry, just pick it up, please.
Oh, sorry. It was a lot closer to forty-five thousand dollars a year. There was a service contract on the tower, and they were supposed to keep it clean, inspected, caught, sealed, and everything. But we were paying them forty-five thousand dollars a year to do about a thousand or fifteen hundred dollars a year worth of work. And that was one of the first things where Dennis Moore did was get that contract canceled. And that's, I know there's never been any real resolution to it, but...
For clarification on why that contract was canceled for everybody in here, can I come out and say it? One of the company members tried to bribe me to convince the city council to stick with their contract, and I pretty much everything but told that guy to decro. So that's why we don't have that company anymore.
I was also told by previous crew people that they were supposed to put a new filter system and to kind of filter out some of the drug that's in the water. I was told that that was put in. I don't know if it actually was or not. And the main gripe I have on that note is I always get the notice afterwards, "Oh, the water has some kind of micro blah 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 inside it." You know, and it gets in my ear, and I have a vertigo in and of the hospital, you know, because something's in the water and gets in my ear. You know, that happened to me about six years ago. And then next time in, we get water in the water. "Oh, water might cause you to have diarrhea." You know? I get that one tacked on my door. You know, and I'm going, yeah, but yeah, oh, but the problem was already been taken care of, bloody die, you know? And I'm going, wow, man, I wonder why I couldn't buy an ice cream, you know, cause I've gotten a damn runs, you know? I mean, you know, it would like, it would be nice to get a warning before we get contaminated, you know, before, you know, afterwards.
We need to get back on track. Well, I understand fully your, your, what you're saying.
I, I think I can address that pretty quickly here.
Okay.
The town has to test the water. When they take the sample, they have to send it to a lab. The lab then notifies them whether, what the condition of the water is. That's when you get your notice. You can't know that the water's bad before, you can't know the water's bad before you do the testing on it. And.
Something draws that picture.
There, there hasn't been very many instances like that in the past three years. I don't think you guys have had more than one.
But one, we had a water main break. And we're digging it up. Bust the pipes and we get residue in that water. There ought to be a boil order issue.
Absolutely, there should be. It should be.
We don't get any of that. We don't even know, we don't even know how come the town is so hot around here.
I will, uh.
Okay.
I will address that in the future. Thank you, Chuck.
Okay, we, we need to get back on track, cause otherwise we're gonna be here all night. The next thing on the line is, um. I have one. Oh, okay. Cody's moving furniture again, sorry. Is the phone system? I did talk to Sergio.
Okay, did you need another? I have, I printed it out again, cause I wasn't sure where the other one was.
I really want to talk to C-Com before, cause I wanna know exactly what it is we're supposed to be getting. So I think that we need to sit down and call C-Com and ask them exactly what it is we're supposed to be getting. If we're supposed to be getting phone service from them, we want it, because, well, like today I was talking to you on the phone and I could hear the other line clearly. So it's, it's a mess.
It is a mess because they said the second line, nobody was supposed to be able to leave the message. It says messages. And I tried putting in the other password. Nope, not it. So we just didn't get a chance to call today, cause it's just crazy in the office.
Okay. So, um, we're gonna table that because Sergio, which I like to say his name, he knows that we have to make a decision as a board and I want to talk to them first before we do anything and see, see what they can do first. Cause if we're supposed to be getting that for free, which I'm pretty sure that was the, the deal. I, I kind of remember that from way back when. If they, we let them put their stuff on our tower that we get service for free, so we need to check that for free and see if we can find the contract for that.
And get all of them ASAP.
Yeah, so. Okay. The next thing is we are, um, is with Davida. I, do you wanna sit there? Do you want to come up? What do you want to do?
Perko? Sir, can you use a microphone, please?
Sure, can I use the podium?
Absolutely.
No.
No, matter of fact.
Sure.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Kayla.
So, um, before you start, Mr. Perko, I, I really would like to address Davida and have Davida address everything that was given to her in the letter that was given to her. Um, I have some things to read I would like to, um, I've gone over with Mr. Johnston already. And then we can talk about, unless you have something pertinent that you would like to talk about first.
Sir, can you use the microphone? I'm sorry.
Yes.
So, it's all right, Madam Mayor, I'd like to sort of just make a few comments and sort of set the table from our perspective and then I think, if that's right, I'll defer to your procedures, of course, but, okay. So, um, good evening, members of the board. And I appreciate the opportunity to speak here tonight on behalf of Ms. Morland, who I've known for a number of years now. And I'd like to congratulate, um, Mr. Johnston on his appointment tonight. Uh, we know each other a little bit. Our offices are just about six blocks away from each other. And he does have a very good reputation and you're lucky to have him. So I was asked to come here tonight to present to the board, um, because of my understanding of the situation and my estimation of what the options are for what the town could proceed with this evening. So I just gave a packet to everybody. And each of those packets, you'll see an item called Town of Sugar City, Colorado, Employment Contract, Town Municipal Clerk. So it's my understanding that this contract was signed by the former mayor and that it had been preemptively ratified by the town council on March 6th by the United of Us Both. From my perspective, that does constitute a signed, valid, enforceable contract for Ms. Morland. So the reason I mention that is because, as everybody knows, Ms. Morland has been on administrative leave for the last several weeks. And I understand that we're talking about her ultimate disposition this evening. So I'd like to walk you through the contract that you have in front of you. You'll look at paragraph 1.2 and the last sentence. And it specifically says, employer, that's the town, hereby acknowledges that employee does not constitute an employee at will. And that in the event of termination, other than for cause as defined in paragraph 5 below, employee shall be entitled to compensation for the period. The reason that's important is because, uh, as the town, town council probably knows, the, both the handbook and Colorado law has as its baseline, at will employment. I've examined the handbook and at page 4, it has a section titled Employee at Will. And that section says that town employees are at will unless there is a valid written contract, as is the case here. So what that means is that when the contract was signed and ratified, Ms. Morland is no longer an employee at will and was guaranteed the employment for the three-year period. Unless it falls into one of the exceptions of termination for cause. That's paragraph, section 5, which is the third page of the contract. 5.1, we have the discovery of credible theft of employee, employer property funds by employee. Um, I've reviewed your letter, Madam Mayor, and I didn't see anything that does conform to that. 5.2, employees failing to appear on their regular shift for five out of any, any 10 business day period without leave or permission. I didn't notice that. 5.3, death of the employee. Uh, Ms. Morland is here this evening. Resignation of the employee, which has not occurred, or the mutually written agreement of the parties. So, and we'll defer to your procedures as to what you want to talk about, but I just want to limit the scope of the thing to anything that are the allowable termination clauses in paragraph 5. So altogether, that means that as of now, Ms. Morland hasn't been terminated, as I understand it. And I'm having a hard time seeing how any of the exceptions do apply. So in short, there's basically a choice for the town to make. On the one hand, the town is paying her anyway while she's on leave. If the town is playing on paying her, it makes sense to try to get her services out of her, as the parties bargained for and agreed to. In other words, to reinstate her. That's option one. Option two, please take a look at page 2, paragraph 5 of the contract.
You said number 5, sorry.
Uh, page 2, paragraph, um. Yeah, page 2, paragraph 5, towards the bottom. In the event that the mayor or board of trustees terminates this agreement prior to the expiration of the term thereof, employee shall be entitled to payment in full for the balance of unpaid salary through the expiration of the term herein. I could be sort of blunt.
Where are you at? I'm sorry, I need to clear. Okay.
Did you see it?
Yes.
Okay. I could be sort of blunt. If I were representing the town at the time, I would have recommended not to approve this contract. This is, I would describe this as a very, very, very pro-employee contract. And that doesn't make it unenforceable. And I think the other option, depending on what this council wants to do, is to sort of buy her out. It's not unusual to have that sort of clause for superintendents, police chiefs, things like that. The second page of my packet is my calculations as to what that buyout would cost. Certainly willing to talk about that with the mayor or with council. And we could go over any and all of that, depending on what the town council does tonight. I, I'm aware of what the town coffers situation is and I'm aware of certain logistical points that have to be worked out. Uh, so, so I'm not a beat my chest, out of blood sort of guy. I consider myself more of a technician type, kind of an engineer. It's like, here's the situation, here's your various options. It's going to be up to the council to decide what they want to do. But after the mayor makes her presentation, I would reserve the opportunity to respond appropriately. Thank you.
Do you have anything to say?
So, um. Mike, Mr. Perko is definitely correct. As far as the contract is certainly pro-employee, there's no doubt about that. There's, the contract as it's written is going to be enforceable depending on how it was enacted. I have no idea how it was enacted or if it's enacted correctly. And I don't know that anybody here knows if there's actually any reasons under 5.1 through 5.5 that would result in termination or that there's evidence thereof. My recommendation to the trustees at this point would be, you know, twofold, I suppose. You either put her back in the position that she was in before, or, um, you table it till the next meeting and you try to do some sort of, sort of internal investigation to see if, you know, if merits to have her continue on in the position or not.
Well, I will tell you that if you look at the front page, 1, 3.
Can I hear you?
Sorry. If you look at the front page, 1, 3, 1, 4, and 1, 5, and probably 1, 6, I don't see where any of those duties have been maintained or that that knowledge comes from her, from what I have seen. I have, um, if you want, we can call witnesses. I have Donnie online today. Um, she can attest to the lack of knowledge that, and I'm not saying that this is all Davida's fault. We didn't, nobody ever sent her for training. Nobody, I, I, I agree with that. She was never sent for training. And she doesn't understand the whole municipal way that things work. But that doesn't mean that her lack of training gives her the ability to lack the skills it takes to do the job. And I don't feel that she has fulfilled any of these. And.
The problem is.
Sorry.
The problem is, is that deficiencies in any of those qualifications doesn't result in termination. And apparently she met those qualifications according to the previous board, assuming that it was all done properly at that time. And so you're looking at 5.1 to 5.5.
And what about not being done properly? Because from what I can see in the minutes and the, um, agendas, it was actually taken into executive session on, hold on. What was the first meeting in March? And then it was not voted on until March 20th, which Scarlett pointed out to me, that it was voted on, on March 20th. But Cody was there, I was there, Scott was there, Eric was there. And none of us seem to have a recollection of any of that being talked about in this meeting.
I remember it.
I, I'm sure you do.
Were you on Zoom video?
Yeah, I would like to see the video because I am saying that that was not talked about, cause it says that there, in the minutes, that there was a discussion, then it was first and seconded and that it was voted on and I, none of the four of us have any recollection of that, so.
If I may.
Yes.
So I did my best in preparing for this to try to find those minutes or that video. I couldn't get them on the website. They might be on there, out there somewhere, but I wasn't able to find them. Doesn't mean it's not, cause I agree with counsel, I think that's pretty important as to the enactment of it. Take a look at paragraph 6 of the contract. It does seem to be speak that it was ratified preemptively on the, at the March 6th meeting.
It actually was.
In the executive session?
No, open meeting.
Yeah, it's not on the minutes.
On the 20th of March.
On half the minutes.
Yep, it was the 20th of March when it was, it was actually decided on an open meeting. Not the 6th, the 20th, uh, they said it in an open meeting.
Also, can we have some discussion about, even if there, I mean, there, there's obviously gross negligence or incompetence or whatever. But as far as theft go, we can all attest to the fact that there has been outright theft, considering, um, smoke breaks. In the state of Colorado, you will have illegal drunk. 15-minute break, 10 minutes, Martin, a half hour ration, 15-minute break, Anthony. And we all know that Davida is out front smoking, 15, at least 15 minutes. That's theft. That's theft.
I don't have my minutes here. I thought I had them.
Do you want me to go in and pull them?
Can you please go pull March 6th and March 20th, 20th, please? Yeah, but. Well, I did. I don't know where they are. Yeah, we did. We looked at them last night. Because she's being accused of official misconduct. I mean, so I would like to get that clarified first because I think that's misconduct on, not only on her part, but on the boards. And there was no recording of the gains or nays.
Well, I know that my vote was abstained. I abstained from the vote. Because I felt like as a clerk, to another clerk, making a decision on someone in the same job field as I was a conflict of interest. So I know that I personally abstained from the vote and it was recorded that I did not, but I did abstain.
And then the disaster with the election. I mean, I've got several questions I would like to ask her about the election.
Well, again, respectfully, Madam Mayor, I'd like to keep the issues narrow to those that I, that in my opinion are 1 through 5. Paragraph 5.1, 2.3, 2.4, 2.5, those are the ones that would be relevant to a termination hearing. But respectfully, I, I think that the others would not be outside of that.
He's correct. I mean, that's as far as cancellation of this contract and termination of the employee, 5.1 to 5.5, that's your only means to do it. If this contract is fine.
I'm gonna say we table it until I can see that video. Can we do that?
I would say that that would be a good idea. That would give, uh, Mr. Perko and I a chance to discuss.
And I'm not against that idea myself. If, if that's the way this, and I guess that would require a motion in a second. But in any event, uh, two points, just to clarify for the purposes of the record, would her pay continue on the administrative leave until next meeting?
She's on administrative leave with pay.
With pay. And, uh, my understanding, she has a personal property at the office. Would she be able to arrange a reasonable time, a mutually agreeable time to come and pick one up, whatever she needs to pick up?
I can have Kayla put in it in a box and she will write everything down on a paper and Davida can come and get it. And she can call Davida and come and get, yes?
I don't mean to interrupt, but I have more than a box of stuff. I have shelves in there, a refrigerator. I have a lot of stuff in there that I'd like to collect.
And, um, you can tell Kayla and Davida what you have.
They pretty much know.
Yeah, and they will have it ready and they will call you when it's ready and come and get it.
I still think we need a list. Please, did you write a list, Davida, of what is, belongs to you?
Yeah, and then we'll compare it to the list that they gave you and make sure that you get everything in charge. So we're going to table this. Can I have a motion to table this? Someone, Scarlett? In a second?
A second.
And, um, Mr. Johnston will be in contact with us. Kayla, we'll just step down and tell Davida.
I'm gonna have space of notes, people.
Oh, no, wait, you gave me. Oh, no, wait, you gave me, you gave me the, I gave you a notebook to take.
Go on, go on, right here.
This is the same place I use for my office most.
Here, your best side.
The next DeVita.
Sorry. You need to do, you need to do this. Thank you.
And he probably got me with my mouth gaping open or something weird.
Would you guys like me, um, so we're recording all of this and all that on the, you guys?
Okay. Okay, so moving along, the next thing is new business since we have tabled this. When I was in here Friday afternoon, I got a call, well, Vicky got a call from Hollen McQuiston. Since we do not have an ordinance, and I did not realize we didn't have an ordinance for this, to put, attach to people's taxes when they have a code violation, we have to take all of these off of their bill. And there's several of them.
Are you talking about, code violation or is it water bill assessment?
No, water bill assessments we can do.
Okay.
This is code violation, dog tax, anything like, any code that, what, any municipal code that they did not pay a fine for. Vicky has constructed a letter to send back to her to tell her which ones. She sent us the copy, so it's, a couple of them are kind of big. And so we need to think about putting together an ordinance that we can attach to the homeowner when they have a code violation. Are you making notes?
Do you want me to draft one?
Yes, please. That way this year, because I know we are going to have more this year.
Yeah.
So...
So what you're saying is, if you get a code violation, they can put that on to your property taxes?
What, what happens is if you have a code violation, say your dog got out, say your dog gets out and bites somebody and you go to court and you are fined $100, for instance, and you refuse to pay that $100, if you own your property, we can attach that $100 to your taxes.
Okay, that includes any kind of fine that you get, like, were they used in order to be controlled?
Yes, yes. We don't have an ordinance right now that covers that. So what they're, we will draft an ordinance that will cover that and we'll get that in place. So, the next thing is the CML conference. Okay, Scarlett, let me talk about this too. Why are my papers all messed up?
Do you want, do you want me to start talking about it?
Yes, can you start talking about it while I look, please?
So the CML conference is the City Municipal League Conference, it's an annual, can you hear me, Mr. Rock? Oh. So the CML conference is the Colorado Municipal League. They kind of oversee all municipalities for Colorado and they're having an annual conference. They noted last year and previous years that there isn't really a rural attendance for small communities. Karen and myself went last year for the town of Ordway. And there's a, there's a lot of information packed in five days that would actually provide a lot of beneficial training to Vicky, who's our interim clerk for the time being. And so I had put at the beginning of the year in the budget, an allocation for one person to be able to attend that CML conference. And so what we need to probably discuss and make a decision on here very soon is whether Vicky is able to attend that conference and get some much-needed training for the CML League. Additionally, I'll just cover all of them, yeah. There's also another organization called Colorado Municipal Clerks Association. So they reference it as CAMCA. And that one is also having an institute, which is an in-depth job training for all clerks. And you're supposed to attend every single year. You get three years of essentially beginner training and then you bump up to a master's level. They get credit, they get on-the-job training, um, credits to be an accredited municipal clerk. And so I know the institute is very expensive. Cindy and I worked last night on getting a scholarship for Vicky to attend the CAMCA. There was one clause that we will have to write an appeal letter to. But the clause is, is that we had to have her as a member of CAMCA no later than March 31st. Due to like the election and what happened after the election, Cindy and I thought that it would be apropos for the council to appeal that ruling on behalf of Vicky since she was newly appointed to this role and desperately needs or wants training for this job. So those are the two things that I know are coming up for clerks and I wanted to bring that before you guys and before the board so that we can kind of discuss like, training our people the way they need to be trained.
And Scarlett, when is the CML conference?
CML is in July. I'll ask her for a few seconds.
July 5th. And then the...
And then the institute, wait, the CML is in June, the institute is in July. Can I say something?
Yes, please.
If we put Vicky on a 120-day grace period, I don't know what you want to call it right now, but is that going to be smart of us to send her to that and pay for that or prepay for it? And I know we did one conference that we prepaid for or something like that and it could only base one specific person's name and you can't change it later. Is that going to be taken into consideration?
We'll have to look into that. Let's see. Because 120 days as opposed to July. I will look into that, I never thought about that, but I will look into that and see. And I'll make sure with Vicky that it's viable for her too. But I do have the information to call the CMCA and see if we can get her in. And they do offer scholarships, so that would help.
Which would be great, but I just don't want us to put money somewhere where we might not see the outcome of it.
Exactly, exactly. I don't think we need a motion for either of those, do we? Yet, because we're not sending anybody anywhere yet. So I think it's just information.
I can put it back on for next agenda.
Okay.
Because I do have something that came in that has classes and stuff. It's online, so I don't think it costs anything.
Okay, I'll put that on your chip. The next thing we have is, Colorado Municipal League is having their District 6 Spring Meeting, which is in Rocky Ford, which is so nice, so you don't have to drive to Rocky Ford. It's May 29th. I, we were supposed to have training with Sam Light from SERSA that night. I have an email into him to see if he can change that night because I would like to go to this meeting. They give you dinner. Well, it's $19, but you get dinner and drinks, so. Any, but any board member, anybody can go. So if we do want to go, if you guys will let either me or Vicky know by... Let me see when we have to register before, because we have to let Rocky Ford know.
May 9th at what time?
It's May 29th.
On May 29th.
It's at the Gobins Building at 5:00 with social hour, followed by dinner, meeting at 6:00, and it concludes about 7:30. It's only about an hour and a half, but they have a lot of good information.
I would like to go and put my hat.
Okay. Rocky Ford gives away court prizes too, so. But if you could let us know by Friday, if you would like to go?
I attended a couple of years ago and I'm not interested, no.
Okay.
We'll do the chat.
Okay, so if everybody else could just let me know before Friday, or let Vicky know before Friday.
I'll be attending under Ordway, so.
Okay. Okay. And that's all that, and we go to Court Report, Vicky.
Okay, so you should have your paper, let me just get to it.
Microphone, please.
Sorry.
Sorry. I'm trying to see my voice. Okay, so CASL is the software program that we use in the office. We've had a few issues this week. And so they said that they think that we should go through training. It would be virtual training, four hours. It's $175 per hour, the estimated cost, $700. I don't feel like we have the money to do that, unfortunately. I would love training, but I, I don't feel that the town has the money for that. But I wanted to show it to you guys anyway, so it should be in your packet. The guy from SERSA came today to do our inspection. I didn't really know he was coming until Terry told me this morning, so I'm not sure about that. But he gave a little card. I photocopied it so you guys could have the backsides. It's for training. Some of it doesn't really apply to us, but the risk control, safety and stuff does. So if anybody has any questions, I can get more information on that. You have a packet that says Gmail at the top left side. I had submitted that paperwork that you had asked me. Am I supposed to state what it was?
For the water?
No, this was the...
For the lawsuit.
For the lawsuit.
Hold on. Can we go ahead and talk about that?
He can have my packet if you like.
Oh, he has.
No, I got my own.
There, hand this to her.
My papers are gone, I already are. I'm struggling, I'm sorry. So we can go ahead and talk about this?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead and Vicky.
Okay, so we got a response back. It's a letter, I don't know if someone wants to read it, just saying that they, I guess, got a response back. I think that's on the last page. I kind of printed out everything that came in. It's from Tucker Holmes, D.C., attorneys. I'll look at the last few pages.
Mr. Johnson, have you read the last few pages of this?
I have.
Do you know any reason why this should not be read out loud to the president or...
No, there's no reason.
Did we want to do that so other people are aware of what we're reading?
Yes, if someone would like to read that one.
I'll read it.
Show the microphone. You might want to...
As I, as I understand, this was an attempt by the mother of the gentleman that died in the vehicle accident with the trash truck, trying to go after the money that was awarded to the wife and children of the decedent. Is that accurate?
Yes.
Okay. So this is a letter from Tucker Holmes, which is an attorney firm that is involved in dealing with this lawsuit for wrongful death and the disposition of the money that was awarded to the widow and the children of the gentleman that died. Please find attached a copy of the answer I have filed on behalf of the defendants in the above referenced case. If not already done, someone with the town should contact Mr. Delatorres, advising him that we have answered the complaint and will be defending him in this case. I will contact him after he has heard from the town. Earlier today, I spoke with the plaintiff's attorney, Steven Longo. So that would be the mother's attorney, am I correct, sir?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Longo advised that he has not had any further contact with the decedent's mother or any attorney on her behalf. He inquires as to whether the decedent's mother ever served a Section 109 notice letter. I advise him that I have not seen such a letter. I presume that there was not one, but please let me know if that is incorrect. In addition to failing to provide proper notice, it appears that the decedent's mother failed to initiate an action prior to the running of the statute of limitations for wrongful death. The subject accident occurred on April 26, 2022, requiring any action to be filed by no later than April 26, 2024. Even if an argument were to be made that the statute is triggered by the date of death, that will run out this Friday on May 3rd. Accordingly, we will do a court records search on Monday, May 6, 2024, to see if any new action has been filed. I will let you know what we learn in that regard. Mr. Longo confirmed that an estate was opened and that Diane Mendez is the personal representative of the estate. He is going to provide me with documents verifying that. After we have been assured that no additional action has been filed, that the statute of limitations has run and that the status of Diane Mendez as personal representative of the estate of Frankie Lovato has been confirmed, it is my recommendation that we proceed with settlement discussions. Mr. Longo has already advised that his client will agree to defend and hold us harmless should the decedent's mother ever assert a claim. Please let me know if you agree. Please let me know if anyone has any questions or would like to discuss these issues further. Otherwise, I will be in touch early next week concerning the issues above.
How do we respond to this?
I can call and talk with him if that's what you guys want to do and then report back to the board at the next meeting.
And this lawsuit is covered by SERSA, is that correct, or am I...
Yes.
An error? Okay, so this appears to be the beginning of the end of the whole legal case involving that accident?
It looks like, it looks like there's a dispute over the way the money was paid, not the amount of the money or who was negligent. It looks like that portion of the case is over. All we're talking about at this point is who gets what.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to make sure that everybody else was aware of what we were reading up here.
Okay, so we found something called Civic Plus. This is to help us get ADA compliant. It just came in. Cindy had seen a little bit of it. I didn't get a chance, but if you guys want a copy of it, I can make copies tomorrow and have them ready for you guys. It kind of just says what they do. I know you, they do mass text messages, emails. They help with our agenda and minute compliance, things like that, I know. I think this is the one that also stores it.
Does it do UniCode?
Yeah.
Now, we got the SIPA grant, correct?
So, so Sugar City was awarded a SIPA grant for ADA compliance and Sugar City isn't covered for the first entire year. Because it's a pilot program, they don't know if it's going to continue into future years as of yet. But they did say that for sure the first year is covered where ADA compliance is established down through a company called Alliance and they use a suite package called Common Look. I know at last meeting, we were presented with all the same Common Look suite emails that I have received in our jurisdiction. But I would say that because of the budget where we are at now, we may need to look into delaying that part of Core Civic. But I also know that the state is really encouraging local municipalities to get their ordinances codified on UniCode. And so we would maybe need to look more onto that side through Core Civic rather than the ADA compliance right now.
Can we pull parts from there?
Yes.
We can pull parts from it, places.
Yes, because we use, we use UniCode in Ordway and we only use them for, for UniCode.
So we will continue to work on that and work towards that.
Okay. You should have like a letter that looks like this. One of our... One of our residents, Joe Ross, Joe Rossi, approached the Crowley County Commissioners about doing some sort of events here in town to generate some revenue. They had told him that they have the food vendors that come out every so often and rent out spots in the park. I think he's talking about Ordway. They sell food, different other types of vendors. The chamber told him that they would be happy to help us out and reach out to their vendors, and that those vendors would be more than willing and happy to pay rent on spots. Each spot would be fifteen to twenty dollars. You can have Food Truck Fridays or Saturday each week, I guess, to bring in, you know, to the area. They said that they usually advertise in Rocky Ford, Mantenola, Ordway, Crowley, and Ballard areas.
So he wants to work with the chamber?
I think so. He, he did ask, it had to be like a year, year and a half ago.
I remember when he asked.
If he could be the events coordinator. I know he said it a couple times, so I don't think he would mind, you know, do it, like getting that to happen, so.
If the board would like, I can reach out to Lynette Reeves. She is a chamber member. Who else is on chamber?
Lynette, Lynette Reeves is not the president. It's Pam Armitage now.
Oh, Pam is, okay.
Pam Armitage is the president. Lynette is now a Board of Director.
Okay.
And then Holly McCushen is still the treasurer. Misty Higgins is the secretary. And the vice president is Jessica Hopkins.
Do you have Joe's phone number, Vicki?
Yes, we have it on the computer. I mean, I don't have it right this second, but...
I can call Joe and talk with him a little bit and kind of try to fill him out, see what his, what he's wanting to do, and then I can call these ladies and, and see kind of... I have always wondered why they don't come to Sugar City, why everything is centered or, I mean...
I would like to see more come into Sugar City.
So, you know, we, we have two parks. We have plenty of parking. So I, I will call Joe. I will get his phone number from you, and I, I will call him and talk with him.
I remember when Joe brought this up about a year ago.
I remember that too. Yeah.
I gotta hear it, Gary. I remember when Joe brought this up about a year ago, and what he wanted to do was bring in a, a gemology festival or whatever, where a bunch of different people with various precious stones would bring in their stuff to display and potentially sell. And I asked him to provide some research on that, on how those things are done, what to expect from the mechanics of causing that to happen. I also said that, I know that over time, those can become quite profitable. You can get a lot of following, get a lot of people to show up, but initially, you're not going to get very much, if any, payback from that when you're first getting it cranked up, and I wanted to get some information from him about what to expect and how that might build. And I never got any information from him, which is why I didn't go forward with that. So be watchful for that and be, make sure you get some information from him of what he's trying to do. Because he was, he may be a nice guy, I don't know him very well, but he talked a good game, and I didn't get anything back when I started having questions.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, and then the last thing I have. We have to do meter reads. Terry went out and did some of them today. I don't know if he got it completed. But I have corrections, like a stack this big that has to be corrected before I can even move on. We just got the program closed for March, and now April's is showing up. I, I don't really want to work on a Saturday or Sunday, to be honest. How do I get this stuff made up? Because there's no way it's happening during open hours. I, I mean, I, I'm struggling to do both jobs at this point.
Is it something that I can help you do?
Possibly, yeah.
For any?
Yeah, we could do that.
Because it's just entry data, correct?
Well, it's correcting things that aren't set up correctly in the program.
Gotcha.
But I could have you do billing and stuff like that. Like, not billing, but there's things, extra services, they have to be entered.
Okay.
So...
I can help you, and I know that Donnie will be here for any to Allison.
Okay.
So if we need to help you get that done, I will be here, I'll be here at one o'clock.
Okay, I've been trying to teach Kayla. It's just so hard to teach her when the phones ringing off the hook, there's people coming in.
It is crazy in here.
It, it is crazy. I haven't even got, we haven't had lunch, I think, this whole week. Lunchtime, we've had to work and do, because I'm doing deposits on the lunch break and running for paperwork from the, you know, Clarkson stuff, so...
And, you know, and it will get done. I'm positive it will get done. Deep breaths, it's gonna be fine.
You tabled Donnie, didn't you? You didn't vote for Donnie, you tabled that, correct?
She's, she's offered to come in and help.
Oh, I think the world of Donnie. I'm just saying, I don't believe he followed the procedure.
Anything else?
That's it for me.
Oh, yes, Riley.
Anywise, and now I'm sure, I think we need to send Vicki to Casell. Seven hundred dollars is cheap. If we can get her to learn how to set up accounts and show us a profit and loss on the trash boost and a profit and loss on the water. They're separate. We haven't been able to see that for several years. So seven hundred dollars is nothing.
And is that key online?
Yeah, it's actually, I just have to come in here.
She can do that on Saturday.
Well, I, I think it's during the week, if there's actually a line.
Do it at night. Yes?
I've got a question for Vicki. Did you say that a representative from SERSA was here today?
He was inspecting the building.
Yeah. Was my case brought to him or brought to his attention?
I was the one in the office today. I don't...
That's a different situation. He wasn't here for that, sir.
Yeah, he was just...
Same company.
Same company.
Yeah, it's the same company, but they have multiple people, and I'm actually talking to someone else about your case. So the guy that came here only does inspections out in the field. The person I'm talking to is sitting in an office in Denver, so...
I'm in hurry, so I'm...
Yeah, okay, right. Okay, so, nothing else? Okay. You have a straight on this side?
Any before you do can ask a question?
Yes.
I keep hearing, and not just at this meeting, the last four or five meetings, we're broke, we're broke, we can't do anything, we're going to shut the streetlights off. I went through and certified these books, I, four or five years ago. It was five hundred and fifty thousand dollars in cash.
Yes, there was.
Yeah. Back in those days, we kept the trash business separate, we kept the water business, which is required by law, as you know. Are you guys working on that now? Because you're going to find a lot of money when you do.
Yes. That is kind of what, see, Donnie has worked on Casell before, so she's allotted information for us, for me and Vicki, because I have never worked on Casell. So she's showing us how to go in and look for like accounts that are wrong and how to fix them, how to put vendors in. I'm basically looking at the, the bank accounts. The bank accounts are overdrawn.
How?
Yeah, we're following right.
I don't know.
There you go with the negligence.
Yeah. So we are, we are working. I remember, I was with you on that bandwagon when we found that five hundred thousand dollars showing left, because there was four hundred fifty thousand dollars in reserves and a hundred thousand dollars in the trash checking account.
What it was worth, that's not what it was, now, is there?
So... What?
Can't hear you.
Are you getting ready to turn?
As soon as we all give our reports.
Is the public in the seat? Do we have the opportunity to submit a letter or a statement regarding the situation with our court?
I absolutely welcome anyone to submit a letter. And I will submit them to our lawyer, and he can share them with Mr. Kirk. Did he leave? Did Mr. Kirk leave?
Yes, he did.
Okay. Absolutely. Okay, Gary?
I got started on the irrigation part today. One of our still noises is not working. First and next weekend, we'll try and clean it up, but we don't have a whole lot of hope for it, and they have to replace. Couple heads leaking, but nothing really serious.
Can you give us some information on what's going on over by Donnie's house?
So we had, in there, there's a water line runs down both sides of the road. Why, I don't know, but one side feeds my house and one there that's to the north, the other line feeds Donnie's house and the McHill's house there. We had a water leak on the east side one, which we replaced the shut-off valve, because that's what was leaking both sides of it. But it looks like there's still a leak in the other line right there in that same area. Terry's looking into it further, but fixing the one didn't stop the water, so... Hopefully, he will find it, I think, tomorrow, but he was doing meditations today, so, which is why I was working on irrigation.
Okay.
So hopefully, by the end of the week, he will at least know what parts he has to have to fix the other leak so it can get filled back in.
Okay, thank you. Oh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
And that was pretty much it. Hopefully, I'll have the sprinklers up and running Monday or Tuesday, and park back to looking good shortly after that, so...
Okay. Brian?
My brain's fried, and I don't have anything to do.
Cody?
I was looking into better microphones, and next meeting, I'll bring a couple of different ones. There was one with four microphones and only carried one box, and it would hook up to any Bluetooth speaker, any wired speaker, and it comes with four different mics, so we'd be able to, you guys would be able to hear us. Other than that, that's all I got.
Nothing.
Eric?
Yeah, I got a question for Terry, and then I got another question for Vicki.
Okay, Terry, Terry left.
Okay, well, maybe somebody there can kind of give me some information on it. I was contacted today from Jesus. He wanted to know about the lead and copper service inventory lines, and then he hit me up about the PFOS grant application.
I have that.
Okay, and then he hit me up about the CCR report for the year, and told me that Chuck would probably help us with that if we needed some help.
And Chuck is here.
He's nodding.
And he's nodding, yes.
Okay. Do you know where we are with the, with the CCR report for the year, by any chance?
The CCR report takes two minutes, and it has to be done by the end of June.
Okay, so we're good.
Okay, so we've got a little time to work on this. But what about these PFOS grants?
I have printed it out, because Jesus gave me the, the link to it the other night when we were in Ordway, and I, it is sitting on my desk. So I will get on that tomorrow, and I will call Lorraine, I think is her name, and see what she says and what we need to do to get that going, because that will pay for all of our testing of PFOS. So I will take care of that.
All right, that's all I got.
Okay. Right, describe it.
To whom it may concern. The vision I had for Sugar City when I drafted my letter of intent to be on the town council following Perfecto E-Harvest Simple, to do what's best for Sugar City. My vision hasn't changed. What's best for Sugar City is what I want. As I have sat on this board over the past few months, I've witnessed some atrocious actions and behaviors from a variety of individuals that I am not willing to condone. I grew up in this community. Ninety percent of the folks that attend meetings have known me since I was born, raised me in part, and watched me take my first steps into becoming an adult by going to college and finding my own path in this world. A piece of my heart has always been in Sugar City, and when I needed a break from the hustle and bustle of big city living, I always came home to clear my mind. Glennis Leslie was my grandma, and Zona Marcus was my mom, and if anyone knew these two women, it is well-known that they were not known to be quiet or demure women. Our family has always been a matriarch family, and that legacy was passed on to me. I went to college and ended up with two associate's degrees, general studies and paralegal. I have carefully observed the ethos in everything that has transpired since I was placed on the Board of Trustees in October, and frankly, the ethos isn't where it should be or needs to be for an effective town. I have observed people that I respected my entire life turn so mean-spirited toward one another and to myself. In front of Cico News, Facebook Live, and other recordings, I heard people confess to literally breaking the law on more than one occasion. I would want to let those folks know that there is the possibility of investigation and prosecution on those matters. I'm not saying that I personally have reported anything, but, because I haven't, but I have been told via rumor that reports have been made and that there's a good bit of evidence to back the confessions made on Cico News and Facebook Live. That truly breaks my heart, that the lack of communication on all parties has broken down to the point that people felt like doing blatantly illegal activities was necessary. Blame has continued to be swung about, yet I haven't had anyone talk directly to me or even when I reach out to them. I have observed people coming to my workplace to voice their support of me and the methods to how I do things, but belittle me to one another. People that I would have never spoken an ill word about and still not speak poorly about have abandoned me or verbally accosted me because they believe I am not, I am doing something against them. And the last I was aware, this isn't about picking sides, this about, this is about what's best for Sugar City. My actions were for the legal best interest of the town of Sugar City, but because the law is an interesting thing to study and has some difficulties, as you well know, the citizens of this community believe that my actions were against them. My actions were to prevent lawsuits to the town that I could see coming if I didn't choose to entide. My actions were to try and get the town on the legal track of, on the legal side of the track of things, so that couldn't, that could be fixed with this council. My actions were not to pick a side, because there aren't sides in this situation. A couple of folks that I am speaking of, I, at one time, for a large portion of my life, I considered family. I still care for those folks as I do for Sugar City and will care about them. Unfortunately, now, it will be from afar. I have been painfully reminded again that no matter how much love, care, or resilience I try to pour into others, I end up the maleficent of the story. If you need me to be the villain because I choose to follow the law, then that's, that's what I guess you need me to be in this story. I am now reminded why my mom didn't really interact with people too much growing up. I'm not leaving because of a lack of love for this little town. I'm leaving because of the illegal and unethical actions I have observed since October eleventh, twenty-twenty-three, when I took seat. I am leaving because as much as I love people, those people have showed me that I am not loved back. It's a painful lesson to learn, but I needed to learn this lesson. Thank you for teaching me that. With my final thoughts now said, I, Scarlett Marcus, officially resign as Town of Sugar City Board of Trustees on this date, May first, twenty-twenty-four. Thank you. I wish you all the best of luck on your endeavors. Respectfully submitted.
I have just a couple things. No, microphone, sorry. I'm busy looking for my papers again. I think Cody is still in my papers.
I'm just sitting, because I don't want to move.
Okay, that's fine. You're, you're fine where you're at. I actually, Eric and I on Friday met with Mr. Slusher. Did he leave?
He didn't.
Oh, okay. Well, we met with him. We, we had a long discussion with him about his, his problem with his house. He gave me a written statement. I took lots of notes. I have contacted SERSA to see if there was ever anything filed. There's nothing here that I, we could find where anything was ever filed. I don't know what they can do for us. They haven't gotten back to me with an answer yet, but I promised him that we would be, I would come to the board first before we answered him back, and we will try to come to an understanding. He was, he was very, very nice and very calm, and we had a good conversation. We really got a lot out of the conversation with him. It was actually a good meeting. Schultz Law Office has contacted me with, hold on, I'll read it to you. These were the documents that a previous attorney drafted for the town of Sugar City that were never acted upon by the previous board, but had previously been drafted and provided to the Vida but remained in the client file. There's actually two... There's actually two things. One is a resolution. The other is an ordinance. I did not print the ordinance out, because it is 229 pages. If you would like it, I am going to send the link to Davida... Or Davida, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Davida. I'm sorry, Vicky. To Vicky. She can send it to your link, or I can have them send it to you, so you can look at it. It's all of the ordinances. It covers everything, so that we are covered, because the ordinances aren't in this building. That way, we don't run into another situation like we did. Everything will be here.
Oh, the town's ordinance?
Yes.
Yes. She's talked about the code book that we had reviewed over and over and over.
And it's all online. It's all there, so I can send it to you. You can present it, you know, so you can print it out on USB.
Is that a read-only file? Don't let people edit it.
It should be.
I will make it read-only. I will make it. So... The other one, I did make copies of the resolution that they sent me. I did print it out, because it was only four pages front and back. I would like to put these things on the agenda for the next meeting. So it'll be the resolution and the ordinance. And Gary, you don't have a computer at home, do you?
Oh, yes.
Oh, you do?
Yes, I just don't carry a cellphone.
You just don't carry a cellphone? Gotcha.
No, no.
Okay, so we can send you the...
Yes.
Okay. Because I was thinking, I was like trying to figure out how I was going to get that together.
I should already have a copy of it in my...
Okay.
I still have my one that was going over before.
Okay. Perfect. Other than that... I'm sorry, let me look through my stuff just one more time. Because Cody stole all my papers.
I need extras.
Oh, we are...
My kids like to draw.
So... I think that's all we have. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Have we discussed this? I want a motion to adjourn.
Is there something else we need to discuss?
No, we were not going to do it, because we needed to ask the employees if they wanted public or executive.
Yes, yes, okay.
So I was in error, so I make a motion to adjourn.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.